Call me if you wish to work. Please do just reply, I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with everything and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, two sets. Motion, is there a second? Sorry. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. So. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call please.
Mertens.
Aye.
Brown. Eisler. Lisa.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Visitors and delegations. Anyone wish to speak today? Roger Gunderson.
We got a copy of Lake Region Electric's contractor's license. I guess I handed it up all you guys, so we should be able to sign off on that elevator project and get that going. I guess if you would have to approve the electrical bid now, but we have the contractor's license.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All post same sign. Motion carries.
And then with that, we also need a motion to have the chairman sign the contract for this elevator.
So. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All say aye. Motion carries.
Also during our last big rainstorm a couple of weeks ago, we developed a leak that hadn't showed up before and went all the way down the basement on the shaft to get its way down to the ceiling in the basement meter. And given a couple of area painters calls and still haven't received word back from either one of them, but a ceiling may have to be repainted or a portion of the ceiling may have to be repainted and a little patching them. Just to give you a heads up on that. And also regarding the north door of the memorial building going off by the gym, I got two estimates for that. One from the glass shop for thirty-nine fifty-eight, eighty-two. And one from Thompson's Double Glass and Paint for six thousand and seventy-two dollars. So. I see no reason not to go to the last shop. And I showed them both the armory doors on the south side and I told both parties this is what we want, doors just like this. So there shouldn't have been any confusion on what was wanted or needed.
Motion. I spoke with them. Motion to approve the last shop. Second. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Yes sir. Um, Brown.
Aye.
Mertens.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else?
All I got.
So skip the bill of openness. Thank you.
Martin.
Thank you Roger. Thank you Roger.
I don't have a lot today other than last week we attended a meeting for the new farm bill, which will be obviously a change for everyone. They'll have to make some decisions over the next five years that we're not quite sure what the weather will hold. With that being said, we don't know whether we got to figure out a marketing scheme that the commission around the noble of marketing. We can't determine the next three months, let alone five years. So sometime in October, we're gonna have a big, big meeting here at the memorial building again. Not sure of the timeframe there with the FSA and ADSU and talking about the farm bill and what all becomes of it. Uh, agriculture world, um, still the same things, it has slowed down a lot. You know, we're getting that time here where he's not thinking so much of that. And in the cropping world, you know, our crop is looking pretty good. Uh, edible beans, we got a problem going on, desaturation, um, it's not gonna be a crop like we've had in the past. But uh, small grains look as like a drum and oil and others that drive, looks pretty good at this point. I don't know that it's as good as it looked, but it looked pretty good. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else. But the farm bill will be the next one. People gotta start signing up coming January, February. Um, that'll be plus roundups coming up already. We're gonna start working on roundup here in two weeks already.
Is that beating winter, is that far behind or what?
You know, we just looked at this morning, when we look at these temperatures we're having right now in the evenings, that's really not typical for us for end of July, first part of August. It worries me some. I'm not a weather forecastor, but it worries me.
What you said, through the long eight ninety-eight going on with temperatures.
Yeah. But beautiful nights for sleeping right now. Maybe not so good for our corn crop, because we could use a little bit warmer in the evening, but. Yep, it is looking right now good. We're thirty-two days going to three days behind the five-year average for corn right now based on May first.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So we're not that far behind right now, the five-year average. Even though we had a terribly cool June.
Anything else? Any other things that I'm. Yep. We'll skip up, back up to Katie now.
Um, I'm looking at doing another scanning project to get the rest of my deed books scanned. Then the deed books will be scanned and digitized all the way back to the beginning. Um, I'm looking at a company out of Spicer Minnesota called Alternative Micrographics Imaging. And I've gotten a quote, um, for twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. I'm going to use my preservation money, that's what that money is for. And I currently have over twenty-nine thousand dollars in that account. So it'll likely get paid half this year and half next year. So probably split the budget between what I budgeted this year and next year, which will easily cover it all.
Is this quite processed, I mean, that pays quite a kind of period or?
Um, we're hoping to start in September, we won't finish till February. But that includes us doing some of the work. Um, we did, they were gonna hire somebody local to come in and do it. And we felt that we could work together good enough to dedicate somebody to work on it during that time. So we did get the quote lowered by quite a bit by doing that, so.
Somebody else has used this company before?
Um, they do lots of work in and around North Dakota for, of course, I don't know that another recorder has used them yet. But they've come to our conventions, I've talked to the guys several times, and I feel like I wanna give them a shot at it.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Eisler.
Aye.
Mertens.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Something else? Just one thing Katie.
Yep.
This something we'll never have to do again then, right?
Right. We get them digitized, we get them put on the computer, they're all backed up on Andron and there'll still be a couple, we still have the miscellaneous books to do and then mortgage books, which would be a huge project. There's a lot of those, but most people are looking for old records, they're looking for deeds, not mortgages. So this is gonna be really nice.
And it's really nice for the rest of us too. So we, so we don't have to run down there and look up paper stuff. Or you could just go on a dirt computer and.
Yeah.
I'll do that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I laid a staple together, just about five sheets there. It's just a, like an annual report of the tax base and telling what's happened. It starts out, it says random company in the top room, four hours before tax credits. Um, the last two columns are, kinda tells the story of overall. And if you look, if you look towards them, they're the last three years. Um, the dollar amount, you know, they're all in the mid, like ninety-five million dollar increases. Um, and if you look in the previous years, typically it's about four percent. You know, four percent versus twelve, fourteen percent. So you can see what the tax, the gap of tax base in the company. There should be another good year like this year. So, you know, we're, the company's in good shape as far as tax base. Second page, just puts that in graph and then on a graph, you can see what each residential, commercial and agricultural has done since nineteen eighty-seven. That one is, um, just running on a room. The first page goes back to eighty-two, but with the graph, I couldn't get it all on one page. The third page just shows a, a different type of graph. It's kinda interesting how agricultural and residential have crisscrossed as far as which ones worked more in the county. And, um, as of now, you know, agricultural took, took a lead. It's a little bit, you know, the ag land's worked a little bit more than residential in the county. The next page just shows the percent of change since nineteen eighty-seven. It's just a, represented a different way than the graph is. There's a lot of numbers there if you want to look at later. Um, in the last page, really had nothing to do with it, but it, um, I charted the lake elevation and that goes back to nineteen seventy-five. And it's been interesting that the higher the lake goes, the higher the tax base goes. Which is backwards thinking, but I mean, that's, the tax bases went up every year since we started moving.
Is that because of less land or is it, less land available makes it more valuable?
I don't think it has any relation, there's no relationship.
But.
I think a lot of it done, the residential anyway, is the recreational dollar has got so strong around here. But market value, if you put a house close to the lake, has went up considerably. Nothing to do with the lake rising, I think it's just, there's a shortage of recreational property.
Well, that, and I think just people have money for it, you know, so people did, money to be able to have fun with it.
Right. I just went on, looked at a house, a guy from out west, he's a farmer, but he's out in the oil country. Um, he didn't even look at the house before he bought it. He, he made an offer over the phone and got it and, um, it's just his lake home, but it's a nice home. Well, it's some place for him to stay when it comes to fishing. So there is some of that money coming this way.
Jerry, what do you think the surrounding counties on the graph that shows the residential and agricultural crisscrossing? Uh, surrounding counties probably don't enjoy that luxury of having that big of a, or that close of a spread between their residential and their agricultural. It's probably, the agriculture is probably quite a bit higher because they don't have as big a town.
Yeah, they're not even close.
Their residential property isn't.
Oh, no, but I think all the counties around here, their, um, their egg value, if you have the commercial and residential together, their egg value is still a lot higher. Just because, you know, Devil's Lake is a big part of, the city of Devil's Lake is a big part of our enjoyment of the tax base. But we do have quite a little more residential outside the city than we do in the city.
That would be very hard to look at that.
No, I, um, I go over to town, I'm here, like, for residential, the city of Devil's Lake is roughly a hundred and seventy-two million. And the total county is three hundred and eighty. So we're thirty to forty million, most of the time we're thirty to fifty million higher than the city outside the city. The rural residential. Commercial is way the other direction. The city's commercial is about a hundred and twenty-nine million and we're, well, the total is a hundred and sixty-nine million, so we're only forty million. You know, we don't have, we don't have commercial outside the city.
That's growing too though, right?
Yeah, it is, we, you know, this, we had two or three, or the last couple of years, million dollar commercial outside the city, so. Any questions or?
With that commercial, that doesn't take in agriculture.
No, there's three classifications, agricultural, commercial, residential. Then there's utilities too that I haven't included because we don't deal with those, the, the public utilities that Elizabeth deals with those. This next week's will be the state boarding equalization is in this mark, so we'll be at that when we're coming in. We just got our sheets yesterday that we're in compliance, so hopefully there's nothing exciting.
Anything else for Jerry today? Anything, Jerry?
Good morning. You've basically got a copy of the printed report. I was just touching a couple of things. The VA clinic will have a dedication on Monday, the eighteenth, at one o'clock. And that's open to the public. There'll be dignitaries there. And there'll be a, open for public viewing, there'll be a ceremony outside of Dublin, and then a tour of the clinics will be offered through the rest of the afternoon. And it'll be open on Tuesday, the nineteenth, Friday night. So we finally got the clinic we've been waiting for, ha ha. The, uh, I did have a chance to meet last week with Senator Highcamp's eight Gale Hand. There's an impromptu gathering of a few veterans at a veteran's home. And, uh, we did learn of, uh, of a couple of veterans having serious issues with the VA. And, uh, through Gale Hand's efforts, within two days they were resolved. So I thought that was a worthwhile meeting and effort. It took a phone call to get the VA to snap out of one problem area that caused for one veteran, so. Would like to thank Gale Hand the next time I see her, she did a damn good job for that one. And that's all I got, any questions?
Okay. Thank you Stacy.
Good morning.
Hello.
Couple of things, um, back October, November of last year, I applied for two different grants. Um, one was for two new sirens to be put up here in, in Devil's Lake. And one was for our multi-hazard mitigation grant that each county needs to maintain and uphold, that has to be redone every five years. I just received word last week that our, the state approved our siren grant and then sent it on to FEMA. So they have sixty days to approve or deny. Um, but the word is, once it's gone this far in the process, it looks really good that we'll get the money for, for those two sirens. And I haven't heard on the multi-hazard certification grant, uh, the state did say though that we will be hearing soon, or I will be hearing soon. Uh, we did get approval for next year's ENPG for, um, my grant. Other reporting that was done, just quarterly reports for all of our grants. Uh, I also met with Mark Fitzpatrick from FEMA regarding the NSIP program. Any questions that I have, I can relate through her, she's been really easy to work with. Um, she also said that she'll be sending them out to the board within the next few weeks. Just to say that she was here, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask her and whatnot. Um, also for the surveillance project that we've been steadily working on, re-advertising started on Friday. It was the first week of three consecutive weeks that will be, or advertised for before bids that will be due on the twenty-first at four thirty PM. Uh, hopefully we have that along for our two. Since the first time, the one company that did it, it was, came in as an error, they didn't have the contact and all their necessary documents in mind. So he was aware, aware of the error, and so he redbids this time for that company, so we better. Hopefully we have more uptake on that since he didn't have a lot last round. So if all I have, you guys have any question? Please.
Kristen, have you visited with Amy McBach or anybody about the, about the railroad?
I did. I emailed her that day that we talked. And I, you know, expressed my concern not knowing, um, and having, you know, better communication with her. And she did reply, mm, like last week I believe, and said that she, she apologized as far as, for the, her mix-up, that she wasn't aware that it was a public meeting either. So she didn't know that the city was going to send out anything to any, any otherbody than, other than herself. So that's, that's the feedback I got from her.
And you know where the railroad is at this point in time and how you, are you working with them?
Yes, I, I've been in communications with them since January about.
And where, where are you, where is, where is the railroad at with raising speed limits at this point in time?
Right now they're not, it was put on hold, they're not raising right now the speed limits. Um, there was going to be further discussion, Amy said. There'll have to be further discussions maybe.
So are you aware of any of the, of the plans that they've put in place? And maybe as far as kind of David, they're going to try to increase speed limits?
No.
What they're gonna do about the crossing on Twelfth Avenue? I would strongly suggest that you work with the school system in, in, um, educating the children of this community, of all the dangers of railroad crossings and of rail, of being on railroad property. That would be a, a good education. Emergency management should really take care of. Um, that Twelfth Avenue crossing where every child saw the cracks, cross it every single day to get to and from school at Purdue is very scary.
Anything else for Kristen? Thank you Kristen.
Thank you.
Jesus Kevin likes to state in the meetings, we're gonna skip down to Frank and Summers Manufacturing.
Yeah, I filed my petition, they're gonna get a chance to review that. Yeah.
Any questions on it?
Do you have any questions for us Frank? I need to, is this, is this gonna work for you? If the, when is the hearing on petition?
That's a thing we set today.
We set that today, okay.
My understanding is that, uh, this is really, the suggestion for Summers to come to the county commission to petition to close a section line, was it the suggestion of the city attorney also? Due to the, uh, the nature, the, the city apparently wasn't going to put the money in necessary to get this street up to speed 'cause it's got some problems, Summers is, is willing to take this on. And, uh, the city, sort of the ones that suggested closing the section line. As a matter of law, I don't know necessarily that it's required because once a city incorporates, section lines by law are vacated. So since this area has been annexed into the city as part of this, uh, the city industrial park, I don't think it was really necessary, but if this is a suggestion of the city attorney, I don't see a big harm in the county commission agreeing to close the section line.
I, uh, just as, if, if this is within the city limits, and if section lines are vacated, then I guess by us not acting on it, if we don't have to, we aren't setting a precedent.
No, we're not.
Of closing section lines, so I guess. I, I hate thinking of arguing with an attorney because I know I'll lose. But, uh, I, I guess my feeling is, if we don't have to act on it, I can see that. It's.
Well historically Kevin, we always acted on section line.
Not within the city limits.
No.
It, this is different.
We've, we've done section line closings.
Yes.
Uh, I know east in, in Kevin Fris subdivision, I think we've done it in the cliffs where there's a section line that splits that subdivision. Um, west side of Creole Bay, there's a subdivision. See, generally what, outside of city limits, what you try to do is, when it's the section line which by law gives the public a right to access to an area and your property, when you subdivide an area, it, it's closing off potential access for people to their own properties. But when the subdivision comes through, they dedicate those public roads, or those roads to the public, so the public can have their access. Um, generally, you know, when you, when a city incorporates, like through, for instance, I believe one of the streets here, I can't remember if it's fourth or sixth and right down downtown, is an old section line. And when you incorporate the city, that vacates the section line because it's presumed those streets are going to be public access. This one, um, I'm not, I have a talk with Mr. Trager as to why they, uh, gave that advice at the city commission meeting, but.
I guess my feeling is, if we have what they don't have to.
I think they're willing to handle it, I just think they want.
Well, again.
Well, they're willing to handle it, but they want backing.
I don't know that the city.
They could turn it over, I.
I don't know that the city has the authority to close a section line, per se.
They don't.
They don't have it.
The city.
Yeah, but it's already vacated, is my understanding. But. Once they incorporate it, it's vacated.
Is there a dedication on that to the public at this, at this, or maybe not, maybe, uh?
Well, sure there's a dedication, it's dedicated to, for public hearing.
Right, so.
You can't actually go down the section line, the, the airport runway goes across the section line.
The airport didn't ask for, uh, permission to close the section line, did they?
Maybe years ago they did.
Well, it did, yeah.
The next runway over goes across the section line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Frank, when you guys get done with your project here, it's gonna be like a through street anyway, right? I mean, it's gonna be accessible for anybody, right?
Yeah, I agreed at the city that we would not, uh, block or leave section line off or the street off. And, uh, you know, the fire marshal and the fire chief wanted it that way, so we can get emergency aid.
Will, will the street still be marked, you know, as a street?
Still look more like a parking lot.
More like a parking lot.
Yeah. Now it's all the advice of the city. If we take it over, they want us to turn it into more like a parking lot.
I have, I have no problem with what they're doing, I just don't think it's up to us to act on it. Just, I mean, we're within city limits, this is a city issue, not a county issue. Let them do their job and I think we've got enough jobs to do without them here.
And you know, I agree in part with you, but I don't, I don't agree that we should make Summers mediocre here. I, I think we're making it, I think we're making it harder for Summers by kicking it back and forth.
I, I don't think we're doing it, I think they're doing, they're not doing their job, they're dumping their job on us.
Have you visited with Tom on that?
I haven't visited with Tom though.
Has he made any attempt to visit with you?
No.
We asked Frank to, um, bring forward a petition to close it and that would prompt a public hearing, is that right?
Right.
Public hearing, all this discussion can come out.
And, and there's a, the petition to close a section line process is, is set up in state law. The petition was filed with the county commission and this would be the public hearing. And, and as with any closure of any section line, it is clearly within the discretion of the county commission if you desire or not desire to do so. And this is the application for a public hearing, or the, the public notification, the opportunity for the city residents and non-city residents to come and voice their opinion. So it's clearly within the discretion of the county commission if you desire or not desire to close a section line. If you do and want to go ahead and take action, whether or not legally we have the authority to do that, you know, if we do, great, if we don't, you know, it's like any other theoretically null and void order. If there was no legal authority, then there's no legal authority, if there is, then it is. In this situation, the city, um, has incorporated this area, they apparently are, for some reason, the city attorney has suggested it, so that's why Summers has brought this petition. And again, like I said, it's clearly within your discretion if you would want to close it or not.
What's the notice, we're back here three days?
Well, it has to be published in the paper, is it two times or three, can you recall?
Well, it has to be published in the paper. Is it two times or three times? Can you recall?
Off the top of my head, no. I can't recall this too.
There's always a lot of discussion on that point. It's usually three time, three consecutive weeks. You can go Friday, Monday, Monday, or something like that and work it into two weeks. It's usually three publications.
Doesn't, all that that you said as far as that, wouldn't that become null and void once it becomes incorporated and the section lines are gone? You know, so to me, it's just, to me, it's totally a city deal on whether the city wants to let them close the speed, just like Levers closed the speed over here, whatever direction Levers is from us. And, uh, that, to me, uh, it's a city speed. Or am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
But Levers brought that to us?
No, Levers didn't.
But they were, left them here.
I think they did, did for, for public input.
They brought it.
But you know, Levers did this over here. I know Ramsey Bank probably twenty years ago closed off one over so they could expand to the west. And that's not uncommon for the city to do that.
So isn't that basically what we're looking at here?
Well, I, I don't see a, a big distinction. Legally, I didn't think, I don't think that Summers needed to come to the county commission to, to close the section line because the city does have authority to do that. This flip sides of the coin is if for some reason the city has made that suggestion to Summers, then obviously it's within their power to ask the county commission to have a hearing and, and to get an order to close it. So as I said, this is-
I guess one more question. Do you, do you think we should follow through with this in, in this, this, uh, hearing?
Well, like I've, like I've mentioned to this commission on numerous times, I could tell you what you can do and what you can't do. I'm not gonna tell you what to do.
I don't know.
So would you like us to follow through with this?
The city would like you to follow through with it. It, uh, when I went to, and I hired an attorney to write the petition, um, his opinion was the same as Sturz's. Mr. DeSuffie said the county shouldn't have anything to do with this. This is totally a city issue. So since the city requested it to be agreed to write it.
We're looking at sixty days, however.
Well, I would say the hearing would be the first meeting in September.
We can get the publication done before that. Also-
Also, okay.
There's a motion and a second? No, it's a motion.
Yeah, call it.
And a second. All in favor say aye. All the same sign?
What time do you want the hearing on, September?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
I really think the city should do their job.
Moving to Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, start with, and we'll go through the, excuse me, road projects we got going on. Uh, this is coming for, we'll be going. Uh, the dirt work has come along pretty good. I haven't heard a schedule on the paving yet, but I'll follow as soon as the dirt work is done. So that's a little on ice. Any questions on that project?
There's a certain amount of deals on railroads in Southside. We had the railroad insurance in yesterday.
What did they want?
Uh, points taken on that excavation to make room for the pavement section, a hundred fifty feet each way from the railroad. That excavation is, is starting today.
Total?
Yeah, that, that matters. There's no room to go up, but the pavements, we had to take it all out to taper it down to railroad.
And we do that, isn't there?
Yep.
Yeah, we know that part of the job. Anything else on that one? Okay, Ramsey County eight, uh, Finelift overlay. Uh, we're having a pre-job this afternoon. If anybody's interested, it's not something you really need to attend, but it's at two thirty in, in K L J's office. Two o'clock in, in K L J's office. Um, they also have the contract, engineering contract that I've, I've looked over and it looks, uh, good to me, so it would be a motion for the commission, the chairman to decide that.
Sounds okay.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign? Motion carried.
And there'll be two coves replaced on that job. I'll just bring up the speed. Um, any questions on that project? Okay, Ramsey County nine, Greg is, uh, gonna start working on that this week. He's, he, yesterday, he told me Wednesday, so we'll see how, like tomorrow. We'll see how that goes. I think the deadline for that is August fifteen. So he's gonna be pushing it, but we won't push him too hard either. I mean, that's pretty early deadline, so. He knows he needs to get it done. Any questions on that one? Ramsey nine. Okay, and seven, we got the contract back from the contractor for that one, so he's gonna be starting working on that this week. Well, he's gonna move his equipment in this week. Probably start working on it the first part of next week. So that one will be done before harvest begins also. That, that'll actually close for the day or two that he puts the coves in. Any questions on seven? And the truck ramps and the railway, that's all two of the railway issues.
Um, I guess we got one of the A-LANs were signed, uh, their deeds for the project and temporary construction easements. There's, uh, total A-LAN owners, uh, twenty-two railway parcels and seven temporary construction easements, and those were two of each of those. Um, everybody else, I guess, uh, let's see, Hager I think we're okay with. Um, part of it is, part of his, his own commercial even though we had it, or it's actually A-LAN, but it's his own commercial up to the highway between El Sogs and Highway twenty, and it was supposed, he says it was supposed to be his own highway all the way over to Johnson's, but it isn't shown that way. Um, but he'll, for the non-A-LAN value, he would accept his offer then. Let's see. Careveries, I guess they, they requested, um, I guess double what the appraisal waiver valuation is. And I guess we'd like to get an appraisal on the property and then, and take that all the way around the curve. Again, since we have, we have to go to a full appraisal, I've got a quote from Tinham appraisal out of Detroit Lakes that we used before. Um, and that's four thousand dollars for the appraisal. I guess if it did end up, where that they, that landowner challenged the appraisal and went to court over it, that, that, you know, this guy would be able to, you know, defend his appraisal. So, um, I guess the completion date for that, that, uh, he figures he can get it done by September twenty-second, which is, you know, over a month away. And I think that's, Careveries have about half the land on the project. So if we have a solid appraisal on that, I think we'll have a stronger position for negotiating with the rest of the landowners. And we'll have, we'll have a solid value, a lot of, I think the appraisal waiver valuation, Gary came up with this fair, but apparently the landowners are looking for more. So.
How many acres is that one that, that's asking for double?
There is, let's see, about ten. Acres. So that's about half the project.
How many of the motion to, to the appraisal got that?
Yep.
That's the four thousand.
No, yeah.
Question, is there a second? Can you think just to give me more leverage?
Well, and, and we have, we have to do it. I guess I, I don't know if you, if the county is looking at, um, we don't have any action on, on any properties on this one. Those, it's not, you know, some of the other ones we looked at it as they were, you know, emergencies situation. Here, I don't know if you're interested in doing that or not, but if it-
You've gotten one out of eight to sign?
Right.
I thought they were all in favor of this project out there. No?
No, yeah, I mean, no, nobody's against the project at all. They just want more money for their land.
And using juries and braysal?
Reason, yeah, when that's the-
Well, that's coming that way.
Right, I mean, that's, we had comparable sales that were, the average was right where he set the value. It's right where it should be, if you're like-
This, this, this person's appraisal might come in the same as jury's.
Yeah, or, yeah, and if it's a few hundred dollars more or less, I mean, at least we know.
If we have to go to court then, at least we have.
So basically, they feel they got us over a barrel and they want us to grab real type. Cause they're gonna pop.
It'd be one way or another. It seems like it kind of covers the thought, I think.
Disagreeing or holding up our timeline or like?
Yeah, well, they, I mean, we, we've talked to all the landowners, only one has signed up to eight. And I guess this is the next step, be able to go back to them with, you know, a, a third party value. I, I guess it, it's, yeah, pushes us back a little.
Is this basically the time? Is this basically what you do when you get?
Yeah, this is the third step.
Yeah, this is pretty much what we have to do.
The lack, and acquisition, there's steps that you have to follow.
Steps that you have to follow.
And this is-
So if we don't get this, the project don't happen?
No, that's not true because we can-
I'm asking.
But there's all-
I'm just asking a question. Are you overruled without access?
Well, we had the, can end the right way, but it just puts us in a better this'll help a lot for that, if, if it came to that.
With that many property owners, I'm sure that we're gonna end up having to get an outside appraisal for some way anyway to-
Well, I think this one is probably one of the more valuable parcels because it's close side, closest side to, you know, when I send, send us there.
Yeah.
So I think having this appraisal, I, I don't think we have to do it for each of them. But just doing one should cover almost everything.
And it's all A-LAN, right?
Yeah, and that's part of the argument that the landowners have, too, is that it's along the truck route. They think it's, you know, it has a road that's improved and access is improved, then it may be more commercial valuable for commercial or industrial or even resident, or even residential outside the city.
Currently it's agricultural, but it could be switched to.
Have you asked for the township for their help? With the landlords?
I don't think so.
Who are they? Ray Strong and one?
Uh, the Careveries are all those eight.
No, but supervisor Ray Strong and one?
Right.
Oh. You know that one?
Randy Olsen.
I'm, I'll find out.
What country is it?
I'll, I'm sorry, I'll find out. I'll figure it out.
Reese Brown, William Hilton, Randy Olsen, Pedigills. Pedigills.
Randy Olsen's not there anymore. Randy Olsen's.
Randy Olsen is?
Yeah. And William Hilton.
Oh, they're good for you. Probably pay a little help for them, you know, so as not to be the landlords.
I don't know. I mean, we, they haven't been, it isn't like Grant was telling people were you know, really had emotional attachments to it or, you know, a fight against the project. It's more, it's just a dollar value is all they're concerned about. They're not, nobody is saying they won't sign it if the money isn't right. Or if the money's right.
I do also try.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, for sure. But.
Why do you want business?
Since it's a right of its own.
Yeah.
So it can start in the spring, right, and that's the point?
Well, it's on toilets now, yeah, yeah.
It won't start to fall anymore.
Right, well, we were hoping it would start to fall, but it doesn't. It doesn't look that way now.
Well, and again, the city's got a little skin in this game too because they're the ones that need the bypass to get, to get their railroad project, uh, put through. You know, they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with the closing of, of, uh, College Drive. So.
And this, and that one. This project can easily get completed in a year.
Right.
Next year.
Yeah.
So it, it'll, it'll be out of the way.
Before sixteen, when it, when they start their railroad project, yeah. But just to the point of fact, they should be able to offer some help as well. I mean, they've offered monetary assistance already and, and getting help with obtaining railways. Be able to come in for that too.
So all right, now I guess the motion is just to hire this appraisal firm to do the appraisal on the line. There's a motion and a second.
Roll call please.
Highwood?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, any more discussion on the truck route? Uh, Ramsey ten, that's, that's moving along real nice with the drier weather we're having now. There's some marble pits, a little dryer work, let's see, really moving some dirt in. Don't think we've had any issues to jump on us lately, so we got one more cove we're working on getting replaced. So I think we've got all the coves ironed out.
So the landowners are happy?
Yep, they are. Yeah, we've, uh, done all we can do with the, or-
To appease.
Yeah.
Well, and they have valuable and, and-
Yeah, I mean, we might, we might get it right too.
Right, we might want it back.
So.
Have you had any problem with the road closure thing? Have you, that, has that gone through the state and the, it's all set?
Well, I haven't seen the federal highway. I don't think they signed it yet. Um, the head of D O T or the state signed it.
The state signed it?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess not the head of D O T, it was the, the grocery party at D O T.
The grocery, okay. All right.
So.
It went to the feds, but we haven't heard anything.
Okay. But it is, it is in their hands and we should, we're just waiting for their reply, okay?
Yeah, I checked last night on it. It wasn't posted in the record system yet.
So, anything more on time? Any questions? Okay, down to the next item, uh, we're gonna be renting an excavator to do those two, well, the one cove in Cato Township and Alstoria with the Schleyhorn Bridge that the water board talked about earlier. And I guess I did get some prices yesterday, but I'm not exactly sure what it's gonna cost us, but it's gonna be in that two to three thousand dollar range for three weeks to a month. I don't think we'll need it that long, but that's the cheapest way for us to rent it. Rent it by the week costs more than rent it by the month, so. Worked out that way.
Motion's approved. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same sign? Motion carried.
And then that Schleyhorn Bridge, uh, we did come up with a recommendation from the water board. They want to get in three forty-eight inch arches at that site and the cost of those coves are gonna be sixty-five hundred dollars, so I think the motion to spend the money is to buy those coves. So the Schleyhorn Bridge costs.
Motion to approve. Motion is a second?
Is that, is that the one that's on Miller's Land?
Uh, no, that's, that's the Cato one.
That's the Cato one.
This one is just south of Edmore, uh, the head end there.
Okay.
And then if you go a mile west and then just off to the south.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Oh, that should be a little while.
Highwood?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye. Motion carried.
And I also need order of all the coves just for inventory out at the shop. They are there. They're, they're gonna cost around twenty-two thousand. What the motion is.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. Roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Highwood? Olsen?
Olsen?
Aye.
I think all of it's going up or down, or?
They're down. Let's see, I can't remember. I didn't change my price.
It's the joy of being the middleman.
There's some work being involved with him, man, too.
Well, absolutely, uploading, loading, and cut work, and.
Uh, number four there, North Dakota LTAP's putting on a training program, a brand new training program for motorator operators, they got a instructor out of Minnesota. But this is what he does, and he, and he was an operator for many years himself, it's a two-day course, it costs a hundred fifty dollars a person. Yesterday I found out that we were selected, they're doing two pilot programs in the state, one on the east side of the state, one on the west side of the state, and. We got selected as the east side, so sending seven guys is gonna be over a thousand dollars, so I thought I'd bring that to your attention, and, um, probably should have a motion for that also.
Make a motion to approve it. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Deese? What types of motorators are they gonna use?
They use our own, I mean, when they come, they're, uh, they're doing, they come and use whoever county they're in, they use their motorators, if they go to a newer county, they're gonna use their motorators. It's a good deal.
I guess it's a good deal.
Deese?
Aye.
Brown? Heisler?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye. Motion carried.
And just the last one there, I'll be going to the, uh, Naco President's Tour, Long County on the fourteenth, if anybody wants to ride along there. Might be a good place to bring up the, our, uh, regional meeting, and, uh, we talked about how, uh, Naco not.
Following through.
Yeah, great, might be a good place to bring that up and discuss that, if anybody wants to ride along, just let me bring that up, let me know. I don't know what kind of it is, I don't know if they set the time. But I'll let you guys know what time it's gonna be. It's all I have.
Actually, you have this, uh, speed limit thing here.
Oh, yeah, right. That letter from the real township, I didn't bring my, essentially it says they want the signs put back to the same as they were previously.
I will be moved back, like, or. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Both same sign, motion carried.
I had a call last night, somebody pulled off Wallai Drive and done ordies, because they, because they turned off at Wallai Drive, we didn't see the signs.
Um, this is on the same vein, but I've had several phone calls from people living on Highway nineteen, you know, the speed limits are so restricted. South. And out on the other one, in Highway nineteen, when you get past, when you get to the, um, lagoon, the speed limit is sixty-five out there. There are no turn offs, it, it's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen, people come flying over that, that dike, and. I don't think, or anything like, maybe, a little over sixty-five, uh, and, I mean, there's no chance for kids out there, and there are a lot of kids living on Highway nineteen. I have gone to Greg at the state highway, and he pretty much brushed me off, but I. Maybe need to ask the state to reconsider that, I know in two thousand sixteen they are putting in, um, turns, um, turning lanes, but. Even the buses, I have a real problem with it, because traffic is like so fast in what is essentially residential area.
We've made a big difference too, if the people coming off the cove road and off Wallai Drive would use the stop sign.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that'd be real helpful to them.
Didn't I just help them though?
But it, it is a real issue of concern, those people living up there, because they're kids. I don't know if the county can do anything other than ask them to, to drop that speed limit, at least, you know, to fifty-five, I mean, good heavens.
You know, I think if we submit a letter or something to the D O T, you know, probably.
I'd like to make a motion that we do that, submit a letter to D O T asking for their consideration for, for safety issues, to, to lower that speed limit. To the dike, to at least down to fifty-five.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I guess, I don't know what anything of the problem, or, I mean, I'm not saying you're the one, I'm saying, I haven't heard or don't know of the problem.
Right, and because it's state highway, um, you know, but I, I don't know that people really know what to do, or where to call, or anything, it's just. I guess I have. Be the person that, that you want to do something with it.
Maybe Kevin, you could just talk to them, I mean, that'd be the best way.
Well, I don't think it'll happen, but I'll, I'll come to it.
I recommend that they take a look at it anyway.
I've already done that. Got nowhere, that's why I would ask for a little more muscle.
There's a motion, is there a second? All second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carried.
Go on, Dr. Elizabeth, thirty-one. How do you sign it, right?
Thank you, Kevin.
Anything else for Kevin today? Thank you, Kevin. We're, we're gonna skip down to new business. Starting with the discussion on the trailer and Ed Moore again.
Um, Mark came in and, uh, moving comment, did you move it, Mark, or?
No, it's, it's waiting to be pulled.
Okay.
But the wheels are on, it, the hitch is on, the site has been cleaned up, the deck has been removed, the entryway's been removed, so. Some neighbors been stopping by, just kinda gave an update, I think the others sharply, so.
Thank you.
Did you say you stopped and talked to Diane down at the elevator?
I called her.
Oh, okay.
Talked to Mister Kucher, he came by.
Okay, okay. It's ready to roll, it looks, they're, they're the ones that are calling me, wondering.
We do a drive-by, it looks good.
Okay, it's ready, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got all the furniture filed for Diane to pick up, so it's, the site.
Videotaping of commission meetings. Good idea.
I have a little problem with the.
I don't have any issue with it, it's certainly, it's like, we're reasonably.
I know at one time Steve had asked me about putting it on, was it YouTube?
Yeah. I guess, just in the last few weeks, people have been wanting to see it, and. They had to come in here and watch it on the TV, cause they didn't have DVD player at home, the way to watch it, but even just distributing it. I mean, there's a button on the software that upload to YouTube, and it would be done in a couple hours. Instead of having to wait and burn a disc for somebody, and, but. Or, and, that would be the cheapest way too, it's free, so. I, it's just an idea I threw out there.
I know I've seen a lot of other commission meetings taped and on TV, but I, I don't.
I.
Me and Scott are Mr. Computers.
I looked on YouTube, and I guess there, there aren't any North Dakota counties yet that have, but there were at least four in South Dakota that have. Similar number in Minnesota, that put their commission meetings on there, I guess there were a few, like, cutouts of North Dakota meetings on there, and. But not full meetings.
There's no counties in North Dakota doing that?
Not on YouTube, but, I mean.
There are.
Bismarck, or Mandan. They have all their.
Is that very helpful?
Fargo, they've got their own stations and Grant Fords, you can watch. There's on TV.
Long snook editing, should absolutely know about it.
Well, dabble the gavel, I guess.
That's it.
And it, and it should be posted. What did you want to do on this, sir?
Well, I just, I just wanted your opinion, and Steve had asked me, and I said, you know, I don't really think we should put it on, on YouTube until we talk to the rest of the commission. I guess my, my point is if, if somebody's interested enough, you know, if, if it exists, they can come and, come and watch it. You know, if they wanted to broadcast it on, on one of the access channels, I wouldn't have a problem with that either, I just don't know if it needs to be on YouTube.
Should we discuss with North Dakota Telephone Company with access channel, I mean, are there, is that another thing that we might want to consider?
Yeah, I. Want, that should be another option too, I guess, you're not limited to.
I was going to say, videotaped, if there, if it's on, probably if somebody wants to see it, like, that's the opportunity to come in here and watch it. That was our opinion.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, you'd have to set it up, then, if you're interested in setting it up.
Well, honestly, I don't see a huge demand.
I, I think we should ask for public input, I mean, I don't think this is something that we should say yes or no, if we say no, it makes us look like we're, that, like, we don't want anybody to know. We don't want the general public to know what we're discussing at our meetings, and it, I mean, I, I just think that we should have public input on it, and we should invite public input. They want, they wanna see what's happening.
There, there's public input on absolutely every meeting we have, every, everything they have is open to the public, and I, I feel if, uh, demand everything.
Really?
Within, if, if demand pushes this to where it should go, then, then I'm fine with it.
What is, what is demand, is it one person, is it five people, is it fifty people, how, how do you wanna decide whether or not you got demand for public aid or video?
On its time, if it's pushing its time to where Efield said it, it's overloading him.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sure. Well, and so we need some input from Steve then, too, if this wouldn't be pushing your, your time constraints. You, you need to tell us.
Yeah, well, I mean, burning one DVD takes time, which was, if five people were twenty-one.
So you would rather have it available.
I mean.
Readily available, than have burned a DVD anytime anybody asks for recording the meeting, is that what you're saying?
As far as ease of access and distribution for me, that would.
It would be easy for you.
That would be the easiest thing, but.
Well, should we just wait for some?
Feedback?
Feedback?
Okay, sound good.
Okay.
Resolution in support of the train speed.
Which one do you want to throw up there's two of them? I dropped it too, yeah. What pages are they on, Davey? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know what page.
Which one do you?
Are they on the end? Toward the end, yeah. Wow, you got fifty-two pages, and you gotta do this instead of the end, here, you wanna look at it, or? Just how easy.
I guess, which one?
The longer one.
Longer one.
I just thought we should do that in support of this.
All second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Please do. So we're, somebody made a motion to do the second one? Yes, okay, the, the long one, and a second, okay.
Roll call please.
Martins?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Brown? Heisler?
Aye.
Olsen?
Ah, motion carried.
Approve Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, the fifteen.
You gotta run this by us, Daddy, I. I, I. Okay, I put a bunch of sticky notes, or, I'll write this down, okay, basically, our current rate for single is five eleven forty-nine. Single independent is nine hundred dollars and twenty-one cents, family is thirteen twenty-nine eighty-five, and we're self-funded, so of that portion, it goes. Some of it goes to Blue Cross, and the rest is put in our plan to play airplanes. Okay, Blue Cross, classic Blue two fifty is going for a single to five twenty-eight seventy-two, single independent, nine thirty forty-seven, family is thirteen seventy-four fifty-four. And of that amount, one ninety-three ninety is going to the Blue Cross for a single, and three forty-one twenty, single independent, and five oh four oh two. Basically, because we're a self-loss aggregate. Account, which means these figures go monthly to Blue Cross to pay, once, every individual on our plan needs the twenty thousand cap, once they do, Blue Cross picks it up. But this has nothing to do with our eighty twenty, or the medication, for ten ninety, or the twenty-five dollars for the clinic, seventy-five dollars for emergency room that the employee pays out of pocket. Can I ask you something, Eddie? Have we ever gotten, there? Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Every, every person, or a person has gotten twenty thousand? Actually, right now, we have about a hundred and seventy-two individuals on our plan. Right. We have sixty-two employees on the plan, but a hundred and seventy-two individuals, which includes husbands, wives, children, that's what that number is. Okay, yes, we have, and I really can't tell you exactly how many, but yes, at least, I would say in two thousand thirteen, there was at least five individuals. Who were over the twenty thousand, and then that's where we had to go with our stuff, yeah. Right, and that's when Blue Cross picks up the rest. Except for, of course, the deductible, the employee always have to pay that, unless they meant their co-pay. You know, once they meant all that stuff, then it's usually. Yes, and in the past years, when we were the Cadillac of the plan, we hit it a lot more, so, this employees never had any out of pocket, so. And basically, um, I figured it's a three percent increase, because we don't have to go to the maximum level, because our plan is doing really well, I did a scenario of what it would cost if. Every one of those people went, and we'd still be okay, I don't think there would be ever a time when a hundred and seventy-one individuals were over the twenty-one, twenty thousand, there never has, and I don't predict there ever will be. So. It's a very good plan, and, um, we're grandfathered in, uh, I just wanna mention this to board, if they ever change it, we won't be grandfathered in, and there's penalties in IRS, so you're aware of that. And we do pay into the federal IRS, um, this two dollars per individual, that went into July, so you take a hundred and seventy-one times two dollars, you pay that into the IRS in July. Every company that has Blue Cross plans has to pay that portion, and it's for the individuals that don't have insurance and can't afford insurance, then there will be another one that'll come down in September. Then there will be another one that'll come down in September. And that is about fifty-three dollars per individual, but we're still, I mean, still there even being those. And that's in September. Usually September, October. This is the first year where we'll have to pay it.
Motion in a second.
Yes. I'm in.
Second, motion in a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Appointment to Lake Region Public Library.
No, my day plan fell through this one.
Elder guys.
I guess keep that excited.
Oh.
They do want to be. Especially with the bad.
I thought, I thought you were studying on the society campaign.
No, no. Who are the current library board members, you know?
Everybody's changed now. There are all these new ones, so I can't tell you.
You know, years ago, um, the county appointed a county employee to be on the library board. Martha?
Martha.
Well, he, but you're a commissioner, but they appointed a county employee to be on, on the board. So, maybe we should see if there's any interest in, um, from the county employees. Kevin, you want to give a one person?
I hate reading.
Aw, come on.
Nick likes reading all the time.
There you go.
He goes there all the time.
Yeah, maybe he would, he would be, he would be valuable. He would, he would be very valuable.
Back to him.
Ask him.
I'll do it.
Hold the employees and see what they, any steps up.
Yeah.
Okay. Lake Region Law Enforcement Center.
As you can share with the board what I told you.
Pardon me?
You can share with the board what I told you. Um, I, I have requested, you will receive it immediately, uh. Thank you. The Attorney General of the State of North Dakota for an investigation. A copy of this letter and request for an investigation will be sent to the American Civil Liberties Union. Um, and fax tomorrow morning to Minneapolis. The end. Into any or all wrongdoing.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, can I request a question?
Great. Question in the recess. Call or ask county commission back to order. Um, kind of for skip over the financial reports earlier, I can do those now. Motion to approve or?
Yes.
Anything to the line?
Yes.
Second, there was a motion in a second?
Is there anything we need to look at? It's just the, um, employee deduction line is still on the red of the desk because of medical spending that passed out, but by the end of the year it'll come off. Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Deese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Eisler?
Aye.
Aye. Back to the law enforcement center. Questions, discussion?
First thing I'd like to do, Mark, is I'd like to thank Star Club and Drew for your years of service with the nine one one. Uh, I was at the meeting the other day and I took that opportunity to thank you for all the years you put in. Uh, they were well worth it to the county and the city. Did an excellent job, uh, made good reports from your work. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of the County Commission for your service. That's the first thing I should do.
I'd like to go on with that too. Thank you very much.
I've read your letter. It's an eye opener. There's a lot of problems out there isn't there, Star?
Most definitely.
Paragraph B or listed as B. That really bothers me, that paragraph. And at the meeting the other day. When the Commissioner from Eddie County spoke and said that we're looking at a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit going into two thousand fifteen at the law enforcement center. That really bothered me. And there seemed to be no plan for the budget. Trying to rectify that loss. There's no way that this county can handle that. Especially when we're picking up sixty to sixty-five percent of the budget. I mean, this has got to be addressed immediately and there's got to be a plan. Meeting, I could see there was very little planning in the future. There was a whole lot of finger pointing. And if there's one thing that's got to stop, that's probably got to stop. We need to get a plan for that law enforcement center. Because this county had a great deal of investment in this. I'm sure we're looking at a half a million dollar bill next year for this county to hold. There's many things in the law enforcement center that should be changed. The bylaws were written from thirty-some years ago. And things have really changed in all five counties. Population has been more funnel in the Ramsey County. And, uh, just a great deal of expense in running the law enforcement center. And for one thing, it has to be managed in a much, much better way than it has in the last year. If we don't get our arms around this. If people get our, their arms around it. We need to get a hold of this, that's it. It's frustrating to me when three counties were voting to dismiss an administrator. And the county commissioners from those three counties total fourteen commissioners that are in favor of getting rid of that administrator. And the rest of the other two counties, they have nine. So. In my book, I think we should set up a meeting with all five counties. Because we need to address this as soon as we can. And we got to get a feeling from the other counties of what they want to do and what part of this law enforcement center they want to be. I don't think we can leave it the way it is. Because just with disparity of what Ramsey County puts in there for money. We, we just can't sit here and let another county putting in one or two percent have the same voting power that a county that's putting in sixty-five percent. If I was running a business, I had somebody putting two percent into the game, they wouldn't get a hell of a lot to say. And run that business. So we need to change makeup of this law enforcement center. And it's a true ink is what it is, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the red to start two thousand fifteen. And if this county, you have to pick up sixty or sixty-five percent of that.
That's four hundred dollars.
Yeah, you don't have to be. That's, that's a huge amount of money. You know, we need to address this immediately. And as soon as we can set up a meeting with the other counties, we should do that. With all counties there.
As well as the city.
Yes, well deserved.
Aye.
We can't just let it stumble along the way it's been going.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with everything that you're saying, Ed. My concern is if we let this continue.
We're not going to let it continue. Not as long as I'm a commissioner in this county. We are not going to let it continue. This is it.
I agree.
It's time to get our arms around it and address it. I've been patiently waiting. For the law enforcement center to get their arms around it. And they're just too damn much bickering amongst themselves that it isn't getting done. So I'll make a motion that we set up a meeting as soon as we can in Delos Lake.
Second, motion in a second.
I'd like to add to the event and then that the, um, joint powers of agreement, which are in place for the five counties, be discussed at that meeting.
Correct.
That's just, that's just an add-on to what you're, to what you're saying.
I would like to have our state's attorney and probably Mr. Wang in Benson County review the joint powers and see what the powers there is in that agreement. And what we have to abide by. And if there's changes to be made in running the law enforcement center. Let's find out what we need to do. If we can't sit here and let six hundred and sixty thousand dollars slap us in the face. Because this is going to go right back, majority of it's going to go right back on Ramsey County taxpayers. And that's everybody, city, the county, the rural people, everyone. And I, I'm not going to stand for that. I won't. Just a bunch of.
Well.
There's other words I could use and I did use them out in the cow yard, but.
And, and we also.
This is out of control.
And we also cannot continue to lose valuable experience.
Absolutely.
People. We have lost almost every.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's, let's move forward. Let's move forward.
We, we.
That happened, maybe we can get some of them back, but we're not going to get them back until we take care of this problem. And we get that thing running in a position where it should be.
One of the things I asked Cora's forens about it.
We've already moved on that, so.
A forensic.
Okay, there's a motion in the second to, uh, to one of you.
Motion was made by Brown, second by Deese, to set up a meeting with five counties and the city of Delos Lake as soon as possible. And to have the joint powers agreement reviewed by the state's attorneys and all the counties involved. Um, the only thing we need is a date and a time. Do you guys want to do it Friday?
Today at one o'clock.
This Friday? What'd you say?
Friday the eighth or whatever.
That's fine.
Does that work for everybody? Friday the eighth at eight o'clock in the morning?
Someone's got to travel away to stop back up the line.
Okay.
Do we have people in other counties who have full-time jobs who would not be able to attend because of that? I mean, I'm thinking of some of the people.
What was up with wait for the feedback?
Right, I mean, maybe five o'clock in the afternoon is a better time. I mean, I don't know. I don't care. I'll, I'll be there.
We'd be pretty flexible, I guess.
I mean, I know the people in Toner County, at least three of them have full-time jobs to get out and, and be there at eight o'clock Friday morning is probably not going to happen. And then you don't have representation again.
Mark, is there any way of getting concrete numbers? From the law enforcement center and what their budget will be in two thousand fifteen? Is there any way of getting that?
I truthfully can't answer that. I don't know. I have so many unanswered questions out there that it's.
Bill, would you know?
We have some pretty close numbers that, uh. We have been directed her to do exactly what you, what you want and get those information to the counties as soon as possible. This is a good idea to have a meeting and bring those things out.
Yep.
Yes, we're good.
Was that a motion made at the last board meeting?
Pardon me?
To get the numbers out? That was a motion at the last board meeting that, that the numbers would be given?
Yeah.
Okay. Because every time anybody asks for numbers, they get told they're not the right numbers and so they don't want to give us those numbers. They want to go back and do them over again. And so we keep having all these do-overs and now, you know, eleven months later. All of a sudden, somebody says we're six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the red.
Well, just, just hang on here a minute.
Okay.
Bill. Is Friday too soon for your accountant out there, your administrative accountant, to have these numbers in place or what would you be against?
No, I don't think it's too soon. I think that, uh, it's an excellent idea to get everybody together and knock both these issues. I've been trying to get this together for a long time. I've been telling everybody that, that this discussion was going to take place for quite some time now, over a year. So.
Over a year?
Yeah, I've been telling you for a year that, that this is going to come out, this, this discussion was going to take place.
How long have been your administrative bid on debt?
Been on what?
On debt. Eleven months.
I think it was, uh, September of last year. But would you review the changes and the, and all the changes that have taken place?
The changes have taken place, yeah.
Those, those, those numbers are, those numbers are a moving target. After every meeting, we make other decisions that make those cha, those numbers change.
After every meeting?
Well, at every meeting. Those numbers are, are different when, as we make changes out there and as the federal government makes changes, it's just a moving target. And it's time to ready to head. I, I've said all along, we want to coordinate those two budgets. So that we're talking the same, all the county's budgets are melting with the law enforcement center budget. It hasn't been that way in the past, but it will, it has to be now. We're running short on time, so I appreciate that.
It sure didn't happen this year. Everything melted together.
Well, it's been happening.
Everything melted once.
Everything's happened together. It's going to have to happen between the next two months.
Does that figure right then, Bill? Six sixty, is that right?
Well, it's, uh.
Close? It's, it's pretty close. You're going to be facing that much deficit in two thousand fifteen.
Where are you going to get the money for that? I mean, where does the money come from?
Well, next year, sixty-five percent of it's been coming Ramsey County.
We'll let, you know, we'll let the administrator, uh, talk about how that, how that works.
One more question brought to my attention, Bill. Why do you vote in total opposite of us other four? Aren't you an extension when you go to them means of the county commission? Aren't you an extension? You're one of five? You're not representing the county when you go out there and play cowboy and go on your own. I mean, that's not the way to do it. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. You know, how you're, you know, got to administrate, you got to back up and be a fair judge of their, what they're doing. When you go out there and go cowboy out on your own and us four aren't backing you. You know, that was brought to my attention. And I'm not happy about that. First thing you're going to understand is that you're one of five. We vote whatever the majority says, that's what you follow. You might have a totally different idea. Maybe what the majority wants is totally wrong. I mean, I'm willing to accept if I'm wrong and you other four are right on an issue. I'll say, okay, that's fine. You can't sit there and just go off on your own. And that's not going to work.
I've been on the board.
I don't care how long you've been on the board. We've got a huge problem right now.
So is Kenny Tubner. He was, he was at a NACO meeting bragging about, oh, they got two new administrators and it only cost them ten thousand dollars apiece and boy, were they doing a good job. I'd like to see what Kenny Tubner has to say about that with the six hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit. You, but it doesn't matter how many years. It doesn't matter how many years you've been on the board. Ed has an excellent point. You represent the county commission, not do that represent yourself individually.
Once, once again, my discussion is cut off any means.
Go ahead.
This is again why I sent what I said to the Attorney General for an investigation. And let's hope this clears the debt of everything and brings it to light. Because it's a third party twice rumor. And if any criminal.
And if any criminal...
Well, we're not taking input right now. We're, we're discussing this amongst the board.
You'd never take input.
We, you had your chance in the beginning of the day to put your input in.
Well, my input's now.
Well, it's too late now. Bill, would you continue on?
We'll move ahead and go on to our meeting on Friday.
Is there any more questions that need to come up today? Scott, Bill?
Uh, all I would say, uh, whatever time you find that you can get this meeting scheduled, uh, just, uh...
If any meeting is better, that's okay with me too. If you guys want to go to six thirty, whatever works.
I'll, I'll be there whenever it's, just, uh... Uh, if you can't reach me on my cell phone to, let me know what time it is, could I get you to call my house? And if nobody, at least leave a message here, please? Just that way I know I'll, I'll get the message. Otherwise, I could try and call you two in a couple of days if I'm, if I am here.
I'll get on immediately today.
Thank you very much.
I'll email the other office and find out and the city.
Any, are you still there?
Do you wanna call Benson County?
Still there? Tell them I will. I don't know if you have any thoughts.
I can't, I can't put thoughts into words if they don't involve specific people. And therefore, I'm going to, um, hold my, um, thoughts until the full meeting. As long as I don't have anybody pointing their finger at me telling me to shut up. Which has happened, as you all know.
We're sorry. It is not necessary.
This is my phone.
Do I not have to dial this?
Hi, is Benson County Commissioner still meeting?
Yes, they're still meeting.
Is there any way you can put us into the meeting room?
Um...
I would go, I'd rather go.
Oh, no, let me type with Bonnie, okay?
Okay.
Okay, hold on.
I would rather go. Well, we're gonna find out how long the meeting is.
There's more on the table. Yes, I see one right there. Do you think it would be wise for us to have any of the other entities involved such as the Sheriff's Department of the counties or the...
Public�但在...
Yeah, or the, or the Police Department?
Public�但在...
Or the BCI?
This is Bonnie. How, um, so the auditor box, if you want to be in on dating, uh, with the LEC board?
Do you guys, do you guys wanna talk?
Hello, am I here?
Hi Bonnie, we're here.
Okay, uh, do you wanna just explain who's looking in and the board can go around and explain who's here?
Sure. Um, Commissioner Wilson?
Ramsey County Commissioner Mark Olson Chairman.
Ramsey County Commissioner Myrna Heisler.
Commissioner Mertens. Commissioner Deeser.
Commissioner Brown.
Auditor Elizabeth Fisher.
Thank you, uh, people here. I'm Ron Carlson, uh, Benson County Sheriff. Curtis Benham, both of us, Mike Jarrett, that's Karen. What one of them's up town? Jim Ryan, James Grant. I'm not even going to. Hey, so many of the adults there.
Bonnie Anderson, auditor.
Steve Roper, that's Karen.
Dave Davidson, Benson County. I guess we've been, uh, this is Ron Carlson. Uh, we've been discussing, uh, Craig here, uh, some of the, uh, issues and questions we've had. Basically, so far it's been on, uh, the cost of juveniles and, uh, you know, some of the figures he's, uh, thrown out at us is in order to help juveniles, um, that it would be like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then, uh, hiring four, uh, extra people plus an administrator. And I, I guess we really have a question as to, uh, number one, why you would have to hire a full-time administrator when, uh, the numbers aren't going, you know, uh, we're not talking about a tremendous amount of numbers that it isn't like a daily thing. And also, uh, is there a way that, uh, we could avoid some of the costs by not having full-time four extra people instead using the people that are already there and maybe somebody over there has, uh, input as to, are we way off base? I'm asking for those things.
Chairman Carlson, this is Commissioner Brown. We've been discussing the law enforcement center here in our meeting also. And we've come to conclusion firsthand is that we should set up a meeting with all five counties involved. And we were looking at this Friday. One of the things that concerns this county a lot and the commissioners is the deficit that we're gonna be facing in two thousand and fifteen of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to start the year out. That's a huge amount of money. Uh, it's gonna fall on the shoulders of Ramsey and Benson and all the other counties also. And I think we need to address this as soon as possible with our budget time coming up. Would you people be in favor of meeting with the other counties this Friday? That's the question, I guess.
Um, yeah, I'd be, uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
We were looking at maybe nine o'clock in the morning. That fit your commissioners?
Any questions? Yeah, I think that'll work. We're out.
Some of the other counties...
We'd do this in Dells Lake? In the courthouse, basement meeting room? Is that all right?
Uh, where would that end, I think?
In Dells Lake, in the courthouse, in basement meeting room.
Okay. Whatever.
I know of about five commissioners from other counties that have full-time jobs and would very likely not be able to attend though that meeting. So would you be opposed if they can't come to putting it at a time when everyone can be there? This is Commissioner Heisler.
Um, yeah, I, what, what time would you be looking at? As long as it doesn't interfere with, uh, late time on the weekend.
Yeah. Never thought of that.
What would be agreeable to you, Chairman Carlson? Five? No.
I would, like, not Thursday, maybe, in the evening.
On Thursday, I?
Let's try Thursday, okay?
About six five or six thirty one?
That work? Thursday, I?
Yeah, six thirty. Okay, six thirty.
Six thirty?
I, I'd rather do something like that than sit and discuss stuff purely just.
Okay, six thirty Thursday?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Strummy did rant about the deficit. We did visit about that. Mr. Wang added a question.
Yeah, Chairman Brown or Commissioner over there here, if you're gonna have this meeting, could we get from the LEC board, I mean, we, we got speculation, we know we lose the juvenile piece, so we can count so much per bed and money and all that. Can we get an actual balance sheet of end of year two thousand and thirteen? And then, uh, actual expenditures have an up-to-date thing, say two in the month of July for two thousand and twelve? I mean, everything's been talked about is, is speculation and that, that, that there's gonna decline and, and, uh... Rather than, we know that. And then there's, there's verbalization of a six hundred thousand dollar deficit with real numbers. I think that would, for the benefit of all of the attendees, I think that would really be helpful. So you could see, you know, cash on hand, here's your costs to keep the lights on and that. Regardless of whether you have a prisoner in there or not, the place will have to be heated. Those kinds of fixed costs that are involved.
That's a very good point, Mr. Wang. Would you write some of that down and fax it to our auditor?
Sure, go do. And if you can get, and I don't mean, it should be something that's easy for the LEC administrators to, to click on and, and generate. I would hope it's important that they manage and maintain. But I really think that that would be a useful tool, as you guys said, to discuss, uh, you know, first of all, is there gonna be a shortfall and so how are we gonna deal with it? I'll get companies administration.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Six thirty double eight.
This is Commissioner Mertens. I'll make sure that Peggy Hall, our finance administrator, isn't a tenant at that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I, we didn't hear that.
Uh, Mr. Strummy?
I understand that those, those numbers are available. And I was just calling at this point, I'm waiting for the votes, so as I talk about it, I'm gonna think that actually going to... But that's true.
Commissioner Strummy, does your city commission have, um, those numbers available to them? Do they know, do they know anything about, um, the financial situation at the law enforcement center at this point? Are they going to be invited to attend and participate?
Yeah, they, they would. You know, one of the benefits I have is I get this long-term knowledge of the twenty-three-year experience administrator, former administrator with our mayor. So he's very aware of, of, uh, both of them or, uh, or Dale. Uh, understand the numbers, no, I don't know. We've never formally sat down and discussed it, but of course, I am sure or on board and Dick, Dick is very aware of it.
So there's been no attempt to visit this situation at a city commission meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I have, I have. We're, we're, we're talking about the budget numbers. We're gonna have to deal with that there too.
Mr., oh, excuse me. Mr. Strummy, I, I know it was mentioned too, but, uh, the city of Dells Lake is invited to this meeting. The city commissioners.
Perfect.
That's all I have. Okay, Thursday, uh, Thursday night, six thirty then.
Say, Ron, one more thing they mentioned, that they would like all the county states attorneys to review the joint powers agreement with the LEC before the meeting?
Okay.
If you, if everybody, and I'll mention that to the rest of the auditors.
Uh, those are the best words we're talking about, that nineteen seventy-five document.
The latest one, correct.
Nineteen seventy-five. So, yeah, it's a very old document that's vague, that doesn't have that. The only other current documents, I just wanted to show them the ten pages, is the agreement that the city and Ramsey County can have to do. For the book.
Now, this is a joint power agreement dated two thousand and six. Uh, and it, which concluded there in the city of Dells Lake, which is sort of a updated version of that original, of that original document.
Uh, that, yeah, that joint power agreement. I haven't gotten it in there for two, yeah. So, an old document, hold on. And one of your big examples, I'm very specific about obligations. Since you know, I mean, first of all, I mean, we're gonna have to, uh, uh, anything. If somebody gives an answer, if we do need a separate full-time administrator or a juvenile dealer, I mean, that's gonna be a big part of the whole deal, you know, they, they just, you know, the answer, you see it, you know? So, in this moment, for clear, we're dealing with a basic deficit outside of the issue of what will do about the, the fact that if we tackle what will do about, you know, this compound, that, that's the number, correct?
The fact that we can be just sitting up there. Sitting there with the other.
Isn't the understanding, uh, of the Ramsey County Commissioner that, um, there's some mandate that says that you have to hire either additional administrator and additional, uh, officers or...
I was told that there were PRIA mandates, but I read a little over a hundred and fifty pages of PRIA material and there is nothing that says that you have to have a separate juvenile administrator for non-adjudicated juveniles. There is nothing in the PRIA li, uh, bylines or guidelines that says anything about it. There's nothing that says you have to have a full-time person as a PRIA coordinator hired. Those two positions had been joint. And I guess we've been told that they can't be joint anymore, but I can't find anything in writing that says that other than what our current administration has told us. So I guess that would be a point that needed to be, that would need to be, um, studied by someone who has some legal, um, expertise in the field of corrections before this meeting on Thursday to get an accurate answer.
This is Commissioner Mertens, and we did discuss this at our last meeting. And the PRIA coordinator that we have, Kurt Weaver, uh, said that on a temporary basis, he could fill in as that person. But he didn't know if he would be able to do that as a full-time splitting his position.
He didn't know.
So who could we, who is the person that could give us?
Steve Inan.
I just think it could...
I, I have these...
That would have a big part on the budget.
Steve Inan, Chairman Carlson in Bismarck. He was at our meeting last, in April, here in the courthouse. I'm sure he'd have the answers for us. He's the head of correctional.
So, um, whatever is okay with Mr. Wang or you're still turning or someone to contact him and get the answer?
Good idea, yep.
Thank you.
Be fine.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. No, they were told the right questions about...
Mr. Wang is taking attendance, yes, so he just volunteered to be there.
Who did that? Wang?
Mr. Wang, yeah.
Very good, very good.
Thank you. I guess the third thing, um, that we have that we haven't gotten to here with Mr. Strummy is, uh, we've, we've all, uh, been, uh, dealing with, um, a lot of questions about the administration over there. You know, it seems like, um, continually getting, uh, letters of resignation, um, people left outside or whatever, um, what's the feeling from the Ramsey County Commission of late? As to, um, administrative problems over there?
Chairman Carlson, I'll, this is Commissioner Brown. I'll address that, I guess. I think we have huge problems with our administrators, um, to let it get this far. I think we need to address that in a way that, uh, so we can correct it. I'm not quite sure how to do that yet, but, uh, I, no one needs to be addressed. And I would like to have all the counties involved in this decision, uh, not just the law enforcement center board because we're looking at this large deficit. It's gonna be a big strain on any county to come up and try and keep this law enforcement center going at the pace it's going at and how it's getting managed. So we need to address that. We need to move forward in a way that we can make it hang together and get it a lot better than it is. You can't just let it stumble along like it's been doing. So I think that's one thing we can talk about on Thursday night. And I think we need to address that issue also.
Okay, um... Is there, uh, someone, uh, chairman of the Ramsey County, wants to put this on an agenda for Thursday?
Yes, we can. We can put it on the agenda. This is Mark Olson.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
I just want to go a little, a little step further than Commissioner Brown. You know, we're still talking, the money's a huge issue, absolutely. But money is only one of the problems that they have right now. You know, our last meeting got very heated in the end, and I just think that there are so many unanswered questions. I mean, we had another fifteen-year employee walk out the door and, and nobody asked any questions. Who, what, why? All the, all the specific questions are not being asked. Star is sitting in the audience, and I'd be, I'd be willing to bet you she has not been offered an exit interview. Just, the administrative powers there are, are out of control in my mind, and, you know, hopefully on Thursday, we can fix this.
Um, that, um, Chairman Olson, was that you just?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with you, um, and hopefully, I said, we, we're intending to get everybody together, hopefully we can sell that issue also.
Uh, great company, this, this is, you know, working on, uh, two horses that have made the, the, uh, the, uh, I mean, the board is not able to act. Uh, the last time, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was. The only people that have been aware of the act issue, the salary issue, by majority, that would have to give it. You know, is there a way to question that, that majority of the, the people that are in town? See it the way, kind of coming.
Commissioner Strummy, this is, this is Mark Olson. Ed Brown also pointed out at today's meeting that this board has, is four to one in favor of retiring those administrators. And yet our, our vote is not being carried out at the board meetings. So hopefully that'll all be addressed on Thursday also.
To this one, Mark, what would it be that the board of board?
Uh, Commissioner Strummy, this is Commissioner Mertens. Um, have you talked with your city commission and asked them how they feel about these issues? Oh, that's right, you've talked with the man. But you have never talked with your commission and asked them what their wishes are. And you also are a member of a commission, and you need to address those issues with your own commission rather than being the cowboy, as I guess Mr. Brown, um.
Right there, I'm, I already said, I'm a cowboy.
Well, I think you kind of are. And, and this is not a personal thing. I, I just feel that the board of directors is not going to their commissions and explaining the problems and the issues to them. When I talk to other commissioners from other counties who are not on the board, they have been told by the law enforcement center board that there aren't any problems at the law enforcement center. That, that everything is going smoothly and that things are being worked out. Well, that isn't what the rest, some of the rest of us are seeing. And that's why I feel that it's imperative that law enforcement center board members truly represent their commissions rather than their own wishes. Thank you.
Right, your comments are very valuable, and I will satisfy you. I will make sure that that is a composition I have at the city of Devils Lake. I will tell you, I know the outcome, but I will tell, formally satisfy you.
I'm not talking about you specifically, Craig. I'm talking about all of the commissions. I'm not talking about the city commission. I'm talking about all of the commissions. Um, I, I, again, I don't want you to take this personally. I'm talking about every commission. I've talked to County County, I've talked to Nelson County, I've talked to Eddie County. Those commissioners are also not getting information on the law enforcement center.
I guess we're, you bring up a good point, that even this meeting today, uh, an attempt to open up the lines of communication. An attempt to educate us all, and satisfy us, get us, not that, uh, Trump is, or, or promote, or some sort of, uh, my own personal standard, but to bring out this information to these board members and all the board members who are going to make good and intelligent decisions.
Thank you. That's exactly what we'd like.
I, I'm going to interrupt one more time, I promise I'll shut up. But my concern over here with the resignation of the nine-one-one coordinator based on a law enforcement standpoint, dispatch and nine-one-one, does that staff adequately? And are those people going to, you know, wear out in the interim of wherever, where the flux of the nine-one-one coordinator? Are we, are we safe out here with that piece? I don't, I'm not asking Ramsey County to answer that, but that's the concern I have with Star Tunsford's resignation. I don't know that the board has had an opportunity to address it, but the piece of the LEC that deals with dispatch, nine-one-one, I keep, and I, I'm not asking Ramsey County to say, but that's a, that's an important piece. And I'm just worried that maybe that's breaking down, and that's a critical thing to officers, I'm feeling, that's a concern.
Jim, Mr. Wang, I'll give you my impression. We are definitely weakened and not as far far as that, because no other body, our dispatch function is weakened because far as, uh, from our, with. Why did she quit? Want to hear the letter or the file?
Did you have the letter?
I think she's just out of time.
Would you like, would you like a copy of her resignation letter, commissioners?
Let's get it over there right away.
We'll fax it to you right now.
They should see that, basically.
That should be seen to date before you, um, adjourn. Do you have, do you have?
We have a copy of it, so we'll get all the members a copy of it. Good for me, Elizabeth, I've already read it. And again, administrative problem comes out very, very clearly in it to me.
Do you think, do you think they have a lawyer, any president to pass or maybe they go off track? Well, I guess, I mean, there are two factors that are on the, uh, yeah. Because the, uh, leaders just able to manage the personnel issues that LEC, LEC. While the dean and president of the chair have the ability to manage the staff issues with the LEC. So they're going to be there for how long? How long are you going to wait? What is the, you know, here's a good example, you know, the justice of the town. We had a massive executive, very, 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 in March of April. We made the decision, the LEC coordinators, to still raise the risk case. So that's bullskating with the federal office. We raised, raised about ninety-nine thousand dollars, nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand. What we did see happen is, and all of a sudden, we did, we worked it in, more applications for the federal office. We were at a point there, in March, because it wasn't the city, the sheriff's department, state department. We were full of your town on the federal side, sort of to the question of whether we were going to be open. And we'd be honored to hire people in, in front of it. And that's a thing to work by basically, we, we've had a whole bunch of new applications of people. So we're fully in town. We have seven states, federal offices. Work. All of the ways, we're all new. Lots of pending requests. And right along the different, you know, for a second, third workplace guy on the federal side, you know, all that experience. So, you know, it's just maybe that's more complicated. They all have, do they all quit, Craig? Do, 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 well, uh, although two pending portals, there's two required and one what does it mean about actual allegations?
I guess I have one more question for Craig, and maybe if anybody over there around the county can answer it too, but you know, so far, uh, jumped a lot with the employees and their opinions or perspectives of things. Uh, I visited with, and they're all sitting here in rooms, so maybe they can correct me, but they're all professional people. Our services director, state attorney, our sheriff, and from what I gather, and talking to people around the county, those services director, um, that they are having problems with the administration. So it's not just with the employees, it's with all the other professionals who have a good understanding of how things should operate. They are all dissatisfied, so I really have a, you know, if it was just employees, that's one thing, but, uh, what is everybody else on the, uh, for these people also, why are they not satisfied ever? You know, that's my question to Craig, or anybody over there.
This is Commissioner Olson. I've been bringing these questions up for the past three, four months. I mean, we're losing all these quality people, fifteen-year veterans, ten-year veterans. And, and yet they continue to, to ignore the signs. I mean, this place, the administrative, is just completely out of control. We put in a stopgap to, to slow down the bleeding of, of the employees where they weren't being able to be fired or intimidated. Weeks later, they, they took that back away and, and you know, all of a sudden, everybody got quiet. I mean, we got, we got a ten-page letter from, from Rob Johnson, we got a letter, you know, with, with Star's resignation. I mean, these are glaring violations that are happening, and some members continue to just turn a blind side to it. And, and it just scares me death of what's going to happen over there.
Shoot the sheriff, Mark. Um, I don't know if you guys know about it either, but, uh, since Star has resigned, there is a big deal coming up for next year, I believe, on the Jan two nine-one-one system. She was all the way in the middle of that. Pretty sure she had numbers, knowledge, working with people. I guess my question, what are you going to do with this government?
And I might reiterate the last sentence of Mrs. Clemmons-Rood's resignation letter. My resignation has nothing to do with the money. It's about the principle. That to me says, you guys can give all the raises you want to from that law enforcement center board, but until you fix the morale and the administration in that facility, you will get nowhere. Because people don't take a ten thousand dollar raise and flush it down the toilet for nothing.
I think we have a lot to discuss on Thursday.
I guess I, I know we've gone until Thursday, but I, if we, you know, again, with our service director here, our state attorney, our sheriff, uh, I did not get a response as to why they would make all these professionals here in this and in Ramsey County are dissatisfied with these administrators, but they still do that to the right. There's something drastically wrong there.
I currently don't have all my, my paperwork, this is Mark Olson again, don't have my paperwork, but, you know, according to our adminis, our administrator, that's just the public stirring the pot and, and causing controversy. They're, they're not even looking at these people who are, are making the allegations. They're just ignoring it, hoping it'll go away, and, and I, I for one will not let it go away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Carlson.
Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, and Chairman Olson, you'll put it on the agenda for Thursday night?
Elizabeth has already taken care of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good day. Yes, thank you.
Six-thirty, Craig. Thursday?
And hopefully the basement meeting will be like that, or not, if you know, like, knowledge, you know.
Why don't you ask him?
Chris did, just worked for, she's got a P A system that works very well. And she would be using that every time the album meeting there, including when the daughter is there.
And I have a question.
Basement meeting room is open, so we'll be down there, we'll be there.
Uh, water board is, water board is up here, okay. Um, I have a question for, for Commissioner Mertens.
Did we vote on this last? Motion, make a motion and, and to have this meeting, and no, we didn't vote. Just, I didn't want you to.
Okay, nope, okay. So you read it back and I'll, whoa.
Okay. Most my Brown, second my D C S, to set up meeting with five counties and city of Devils Lake to have all county's attorneys, read, Frank Powers agreed, people have Friday, August seventh at six-thirty P M. With Eddie Nelson, Thursday.
Thursday.
All Thursday, sorry, I forgot to tell you that. Thank you. Thursday, August seventh at six-thirty P M. In the basement meeting room with Eddie Nelson Benson, Towner Ramsey, and City of Devils Lake. And what was, what did he want specifically on the agenda?
Administration. Juvenile administration.
I thought, um.
And then Jane Wayne's. I will, I'll email him too. Got it?
Didn't give us any traction.
Give him a reason to have this done.
Okay. Should we have the nine-one-one situation on the agenda as well? Yes.
Oh, that all fall under law enforcement center.
Well, they, when they, you have your meetings, they're separate, so I, I just kind of wondered, they shouldn't be together, because I mean, I can't see three certified. I don't have that for very long.
Special meeting should probably be on the.
Now, I'll have to read that back.
Okay. Most my Brown, second my D C S, to set up a meeting with five counties and the city of Devils Lake. And to have all the state's attorneys and the counties to read the joint power agreement for Thursday, August seventh at six-thirty P M. Eddie Nelson Benson, Towner Ramsey, and the city of Devils Lake in the basement meeting room. Um, on the agenda would be administrator, juvenile, budget, nine-one-one, LEC.
Operations.
Okay, there's a motion in a sec. There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We go same sign, motion carried. Now, I have a question. Did we vote at our last meeting to go out and pursue somebody to take Star's position?
I don't believe it yet.
Have you offered Star's position to anybody?
No.
You have not offered that position to anybody in charge?
How would you have the authority to offer it down at the board?
Well, I was told he did offer it.
No, he didn't.
I think we're, I mean, till next meeting. The motion is there, a sec, a sec, motion in a sec.